Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of East Bridgewater Planning Board for Monday night, our, yeah, October, April 1st, 2024. We have this evening, sitting with us, members Diane Phillips, Rachel Tedesco, John Lawler, Roy Gardner, Associate Member Yvonne McCray, and myself, Kevin Riley. First item of business tonight on the agenda is the approval of available minutes. We do have minutes for the meeting of March 4th. Assuming folks have had the opportunity to review those, have no comments or questions, Chair would entertain a motion to waive formal reading of the minutes and to accept them in the form presented.
I'll waive that formal reading.
It's a motion by Mr. Gardner, a second from Mr. Lawler. Discussion on that motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Record will reflect unanimous vote to adopt the minutes of March 4th. We have a Form 8 plan that's been presented to us. Property is at 28 and 88 Chestnut Street. Filed by Clayton Rollins for 28 Chestnut Street LLC and on behalf of the 88 Chestnut Street Realty Trust. We do have a plan prepared, rather, by PMP Consulting. Or, you know, to, to separate out parcel A adding to lot 1 as shown on this plan. Plan is dated as of 3/21/2024. And as noted on the plan, it re-divides map 59, plot 33, and map 59, plot 4 into lots 1 and 2 as is shown. Just trying to get it up on the screen. There we go. Their comments?
Just the purpose...
So, quick background here, this, uh... This parcel had a skewed property line. There's two houses right next to each other here. As you can see, uh... The house at 68 basically had no driveway. They had a shared driveway. Both lots are prior non-conforming lots, so they're protected lots under zoning. The applicant went to the Zoning Board of Appeals. There is a note on the plan that...
Variance was granted on December 6th, 2023.
Yeah, the appropriate variances have been granted so that they could move the property line so that 68 has enough room to get onto the property without having to use the easement which actually belongs to the abutter. At the time this was done, I believe that both of these properties were still owned by the same person who was the applicant before ZBA. He had come to us previously. We told him we couldn't act on moving that line because moving that line created a less conforming situation with the lot on the right. So, since the variances have been granted, allowing them to move the line, our process here is basically strictly an administrative process since we're actually the ones who have to sign that document to get it recorded at the registry. I should say endorse the document. We're not technically approving it. It's an administrative endorsement. So, I'll make a motion that, that we authorize the Chairman to endorse the plan as approval under subdivision control, not required.
Motion is made by Mr. Gardner for endorsement of the plan by PMP Consulting dated 3/21/24 with respect to properties at 28 and 88 Chestnut Street, creating, or creating a new parcel A to be added to lot 1 from the land area of lot 2. Is there a second to that motion?
I will.
Seconded by Mr. Gardner. Further discussion?
I'm the one that has hair.
So, with respect to, to this vote, the regular members will, will be voting. All those in favor of that motion, so signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed?
Oh.
Unanimous vote to endorse the approval of all voting members, regular members here Since it's not quite 7:15, we'll do a couple of other things before we, before we get to public hearings that are scheduled for this evening. First item is under C1, a proposed annual town meeting article for a modification to Section 7 of the zoning bylaws. So, basically, the purpose of this is to just clarify the fact that enforcement authority under the bylaw and under 48, Section 7 extend to any approvals, decisions, or permits granted pursuant to the bylaw, not only specifically with respect to violations of the bylaw. So, in other words, the enforcement authority would have the ability to enforce conditions of a permit or decision that this board rendered, for example. And we're just, we're just trying to clarify that in the addition of the few words in the first sentence of the bylaw as it's printed before you. So, if there are any questions, take those. Basically, what will happen here is this will go, it's already been referred back to us actually by the...
By the Select Board?
It's been presented to them, so I just wanted to put it out here tonight. We'll schedule it along with a couple of other matters for a public hearing at our first meeting in May. We'll do that in a little bit, but are there any questions or comments with respect to the proposed modification of Section 7? Hearing none. Chair would, Chair would accept the motion to approve the proposed amendment as printed on the handout that you have before you.
So, moved.
Motion by Mr. Gardner.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Tedesco. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, so signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed? Unanimous vote of all members present. Roy, did you want to just go over the proposed amendment on the planned unit ARPUD District?
Yes, so the proposal to amend the ARPUD District, it's a, it's a big section of the zoning bylaw, some seven pages, but there's only two, two modifications proposed. One is in the description, description paragraph at the beginning. And right now, it reads, "This district is an overlay district applicable to all zones of the town except for those areas within a watershed protection district." The proposal is to add the, the language in red that unless the proposed project will utilize a fully approved and permitted three-phase wastewater processing plant. So, this is potentially to allow an adult planned retirement development to go into the land that the town currently owns on the easterly side of Central Street, as well as the property that's off of Chestnut Street where it intersects with Washington Street, which used to be a sod farm for, for many, many decades. Both of those parcels of land are big enough for an adult, adult planned unit development, but they're both within watershed protection districts. So, for them to, to build an ARPUD there, we would need to modify the zoning bylaw which would require them to put in a three-phase wastewater processing plant. So, that language, identical language, I believe, appears in both the first page and page four. So, that's really the sum total of the proposed change of, of the District R5.
So, at this point, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the proposed changes to the ARPUD District bylaw by adding the highlighted language in the introductory paragraph and the language within paragraph 6D so as to allow a, an ARPUD development to take place or to go forward in a watershed protection district with the appropriate wastewater processing facility being, being constructed along with it.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Mr. Lawler makes the motion, a second to the motion.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to adopt or to approve the language and to, to set this matter for public hearing, which we'll do, as I say, in a bit with, with these other several articles tonight. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Unanimous vote of all members present. It being 7:15, we will, we do have two public hearings tonight. First one with respect to the property at 211 Highland Street. That is a proposed special permit modification. Mr. Gardner, if you'd be kind enough to re, I'll declare the public hearing open at 7:15. And Mr. Gardner, if you would be kind enough to read the public notice.
East Bridgewater Planning Board, notice of public hearing. The Planning Board of the Town of East Bridgewater will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 1st, 2024 at 7:15 PM at the Town Office Building, 175 Central Street, the large second-floor conference room. Purpose of the hearing will be to review an application to modify the approved site plan and special permit to allow additional truck usage of the North Bedford Street accessway. Owner of record, Bedford Property, owner LLC, care of Greystar Development, care of Robert Pellegrini Esquire. Subject property is located at 211 Highland Street. Zoning classification is industrial. Lot is shown on Assessors Map 100, Lot 9-02. Planning Board pursuant to Section 5K2A will modify special permit allowed uses in Section 13, modify site plan approval of the Town of East Bridgewater zoning bylaws and Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 48, Section 11, seeks public input relative to this proposal. Plans are on file with the Planning Building Department and can be reviewed between the hours of 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Thursday, and Friday, 8:30 AM to 12 noon. And this notice was published in the Brockton Enterprise on Monday, March 18th, 2024, and Monday, March 25th, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Two matters. One, since we do have a vacancy on the board at this time, we do have an associate member who is present. All regular members and associate member Yvonne McCray will be involved in acting upon this application. Secondly, we have received from the applicant a request to continue this matter until May 20th, 2024, and Chair would entertain a motion to so do until 5/20/24, 7:15 PM. Motion by Mr. Gardner. Is there a second?
Second that.
Seconded by Ms. Tedesco. Further discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
Matter is continued until 7:15 PM, May 20th, 2024, at the request of the applicant. Roy, you want to go through the, since the next one is scheduled for 7:30, if you want to go through the proposed, we'll skip to D1, the past due taxes bylaw. Roy does have a draft of the proposed new section for, Section 14 of our zoning bylaws, our town bylaws, excuse me.
All right, so this, this would apply to Section X1V, which I believe is Section 14 in English, an act relative to the granting of renewing of certain licenses and permits in cities and towns. Right now, it has Sections A through D. The proposal would be to add a new Section E. And Section E would read as follows, waiver of enforcement. The Select Board acting as the waiver granting authority may grant a waiver of enforcement allowing one or more permits to be issued, providing that the principal who is delinquent in tax payments meets at least two of the following requirements. Number one, applicant is presented to the, to the waiver granting authority a completed application for waiver form. Number two, applicant is presented to the waiver granting authority a comprehensive summary of financial hardship. Number three, applicant has presented verifiable evidence, evidence that non-issuance of the requested permits to make critical repairs will directly impact the current livability of the subject property. And number four, applicant has presented verifiable evidence that non-issuance of the requested permit or permits to make critical repairs will directly impact the planned future marketability of the subject property. Upon favorable action by the permit granting authority to grant the requested waiver, a confirming document shall be issued to all applicable departments indicating that said waiver has been granted. In all cases where a waiver has been granted, said, said waivers shall expire no later than 12 months after the granting date or after all of the work petition in the original waiver application has been completed, whichever event comes first. Additional waivers may be applied for under this section provided that a new waiver request fully complies with this section. So, I think as discussed, this has to do with situations where someone, in most cases, would be in a single-family residence or potentially a multifamily residence that they own, that's fallen into arrears in taxes and has some kind of a significant financial impediment. The most obvious ones are people in their senior years, some of which have gone into nursing homes and so on and so forth. Typically, what happens in a situation like that is multiple different departments, including state departments, State of Massachusetts, get involved for, for payment under recovery from Medicare and, and state payments when, when someone has a principal residence, which has a capital value. Also, which happens to a lot of those, and, and right now, there's actually four of them in town, several of which the, the town has either taken or has taken for, for back taxes, which are non-sellable in their current form and have been for a long, long time. And they can't get permits to, to upgrade them until they're sold, so they couldn't even hire a contractor to fix the property to sell it. So, so that's a significant issue, especially when the town auctions those properties off, they typically do not get anywhere near market value that they would be getting if the property was in reasonably good condition. In addition to that problem, Massachusetts is one of the last, I believe, two states in the entire country where when a property is auctioned off, the, the auctioning party, typically a town, is not required by law to turn over any excess funds from that auction to the owner of the property. There's only two towns in the, uh, two states in the entire country that now still allow that, despite the fact that the Supreme Court has recently ruled that, that that's an unconstitutional taking of property. The state hasn't fixed that yet. That case was actually in the other state, and I'm not sure which state it is right now, but in the other state that, that allows that. But in any case, the intent of this law is to, to someone who has a verifiable and clear financial problem and needs permits to fix a house, whether it be a new roof, whether it be a septic system, whether it be anything associated with the physical layout and condition of the house, can petition the selectmen either themselves or through some legal guardian, depending on the situation again, show documentation that verifies the financial problem, and the selectmen are allowed to issue a waiver. There is a sentence at the end of Section D that implies a, a waiver could be granted, but there's no implementation language, and we were, discussed this in the past with Town Council and said that you've got to have valid implementation language because you have to have a way to deny the waiver. There's, there's no process listed in Section D. So, the intent of Section E here is there's a clear process set up where if they deny the waiver, then they could theoretically have some, some follow-up to that. So, that's the gist of that.
Remember this being discussed at a previous, previous meeting?
Yes, we have discussed it once or twice before.
Yep.
And I've been attempting to find some language from, from multiple other towns that seems to cover the issue without, without having to write four or five pages. And I, I, I believe that what's there is very close to doing that. We certainly could, could modify it slightly if the, if the Board of Selectmen feels that it needs to be modified or Town Council feels that it needs to be modified, but...
Comments? Questions?
Support it.
Chair has a couple. First of all, I think, Roy, that in the title should be granting or renewing of certain licenses and permits as opposed to of.
That could be. I actually copied and pasted this direct, that sentence directly off the Town website, but I think you're right. It should be or.
Secondly, probably means the same thing, but under three, livability might be habitability. And then mechanically...
Habitability, yeah, that's, that's definitely a better word.
Mechanically, I'm not sure that, the way it's presented exactly works. I would perhaps suggest that after, in the initial paragraph, after the word "meets," strike out at least two or more of, so that it would say that it meets the following requirements, then list one and two, and then at the end of two, it would say, presents a comprehensive summary of financial hardship containing either, and then make that an A and a B. Verifiable evidence that the non-issuance will directly impact habitability or verifiable evidence that the non-issuance will directly impact planned future marketability. Because right now, I think it says that all you have to do is comply with two of the four.
It says two or more, but, but yeah, okay, okay.
See where I'm driving at?
Yep.
So, okay.
Yeah, that works, I think.
Okay. So, further discussion? Hearing none. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the proposal by Mr. Gardner to amend or to add to Section 14, a new Section E entitled waiver of enforcement. That is Section 14 of the town bylaws. That would be Section E with the amendments that we've just gone through. So, Mr. Gardner, I assume would make the motion?
So, mid.
Second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Lawler seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting that and, and setting it down for a public hearing, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Unanimous vote of all members present.
So, the, the only detail I don't know is who has to hold that public hearing, since it's a town bylaw, whether it would be us or the selectmen. So, what I was going to do is, in the morning, forward that to the selectmen, and I'll forward the modified version and clearly ask them to, to determine who holds the public hearing so that we can modify the...
Sure. We can set up our three, and then we'll, we'll wait on that. If it needs to be, we can reserve a place on the, the agenda for the, for the first meeting in May. Okay. It being close enough, I think, to 7:30, we do have another public hearing that's scheduled for the property at 798 North Bedford Street. Again, a special permit modification. Declare the public hearing to be open. Mr. Gardner, public notice, please.
East Bridgewater Planning Board, notice of public hearing. The Planning Board of the Town of East Bridgewater will hold a public hearing on Monday, April 1st, 2024 at 7:30 PM in the Town Office Building, 175 Central Street, large second-floor conference room. The purpose of the hearing will be to review an application to modify the approved site plan and special permit as regards to on-premises parking. Owner of record Speedway Park LLC, care of Robert Pellegrini, Pellegrini Esquire. Subject property is located at 798 North Bedford Street. The zoning classification is industrial. The lot is shown on Assessors Map 109, Lot 3. Planning Board pursuant to Section 5K2A, modify special permit allowed uses in Section 13, modify site plan approval of the Town of East Bridgewater zoning bylaws and Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 40A, Section 11, seeks public input relative to this proposal. The plans are on file with the Planning Building Department and can be reviewed between the hours of 8:30 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Thursday, and Friday, 8:30 AM to 12 noon. This notice was published in the Enterprise on Monday, March 18th, 2024, and Monday, March 25th, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Same comments as earlier. Given the vacancy on the board, all regular members and our associate member Yvonne McCray will be involved in the, the deliberations and voting on 798 North Bedford Street, the special permit modification. Secondly, again, we have received a request from the applicant to continue this matter until the meeting of May 20th, 2024, so Chair would entertain a motion to so do until 5/20/24 at 7:30 PM.
So, moved.
Motion is by Mr. Gardner. A second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion is seconded by Mr. Lawler. All those in favor of the motion, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Unanimous vote of all members and associate member present. So, both of those matters will stand continued until May 20th. Okay. We have present tonight, I think, our representative from Speedway Park, Matt. Come on up.
So, if I could, as an introduction to that, I had a discussion this afternoon with the engineering firm that's doing the modifications for... engineering firm that's doing the modifications for the Speedway Park special permits. Asked that they consider doing several things. One of them is to review the documents for when the special permit was granted, and with an okay from the board, I was going to forward those documents, which all of us have on the table here tonight, to him. He is aware that the documents exist because the table that he copied onto the, one of the plans that he submitted is the same table that was in the original special permit document, which shows how many spaces normally would have been required at that site, and how many spaces we agreed to allow to be shown at the site. Which is 211 was the original spaces required based on the industrial commercial use, which we, based on the proposal that these were going to be contractor bays, would end up being 139 spaces. So in any case, he is aware of that, and I've asked him to look at the current uses based on the various usage tables that are included in the other handout, make a best determination from his experience as a professional engineer as to how many parking spaces are needed for the existing buildings on the site with the existing tenants at the site. So he said he would do that, and as I said, I told him I would forward him those documents in the morning after tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Roy. Matt, you want to reintroduce yourself and comments, questions that you have based on what you're hearing and what else you'd like to?
Sure. Are you talking about PMP? Just, I don't believe you said it. You just said an engineering firm, so I was just curious.
That was PMP.
PMP, okay.
Eddie Jacobs.
Yeah, all right, very good. So Matthew Smith, I represent Peyton Development, and they own Speedway Park. And I'm here, and I appreciate you guys letting me come in and talk to you again and trying to get this matter resolved. The, I took what you said to heart. I went up there, I did my due diligence, I put together a plan. I have a copy for all of you, if I can pass it out.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate you all, seeing you on short notice.
Yep.
Thanks. I heard everything that you had asked me last time when I was here. I believe I've answered all of your questions in this. Now it's all written down, so we can all talk about it together if you'd like. The, you had just mentioned 139 spaces. I looked through the current site plan that we have. I have 137. We can add five more spaces if we need to get to another five spaces for 142. There's 11 inside spaces as part of the plan for the contractor bay to park one vehicle inside for a total existing spaces of 148 is what I have right now. Building B, we had, you had asked me what the square footage is and which, who occupies what units?
Matt, just come back quick. One inside space and how many contractor bays?
I'm sorry.
Five contractor bays, one inside space in each, is that what you said?
I have, I have, right now, I have one, two, three, four, five, six.
Six.
Six, right.
So that's the three storage and, or four storage and two marked contractor?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So I know when I was here last time, you guys had granted jujitsu 15. He was only requesting, I believe, five at the time. So I've been up there personally 14 times over the last three weeks, I believe, or four weeks since I, at night, to come up with some sort of plan that works for everybody in the town. And I've, there has never been a time that there's been less than 46 open parking spaces at night in any of those 14 times that I've been up there. I was there on Saturday this past weekend, and there was 84 spots. And when they had gymnastics, baseball, and jujitsu going on, that was this past Saturday. So that's where I'm coming up with asking for 19 spots for that building B. The gymnasium, you had asked me about square footage. Starters Gymnastics is 9,000. It has two viewing areas. One's 400 square feet with 12 non-fixed seats, and then they have a small 100-square-foot, basically just a vestibule, the walk-in area, and they don't have any seating in that area.
And the rest would just be gymnasium equipment, gymnasium mats?
Correct. They're 99.
Gymnastics mats?
Ninety, ninety, about 90% of their whole thing is just mats and floor space, right? So I talked to the owner of gymnastics, and he told me that the max children of 10 per class, which is roughly one vehicle per child, child slash parent, plus staff of three, with two classes at a time, and then I just added 10% for 25 parking spaces. East Coast Eagles has 21,000 square feet, which is 1,000 square feet of zero seating. And then he has sick, it's only standing room on hit for his viewing area, there is no seats. So he has 1,000 square feet of zero seating, and then he has 600 square feet, he has four benches that run down the length of the outside of his turf, which he says seats 16, four people per bench. He has a whole gym and a workout area, and batting cages, which account, the gym workout and batting cages account for about 16,000 square feet. It's basically an open baseball field with a workout area. So based on his two classes, I spoke with the owner, Mike. Based on his two classes at a time, his max amount of players that he has is 14 per group. Same theory, one vehicle per child slash parent, staff of six, proposing for that 40 parking space, plus 10% for a proposal of 40 parking spaces. Building C, total spaces we're asking for would be 65. That's the 40 plus the 25. Building B, we're asking for the 19, so 19 and 65 would be 84. So that's what we're asking for, for the parking spaces for this facility. If you have any questions on that page?
So I've got some questions, but I'll let you.
Ladies, anything on the side?
Just listening right now.
John?
No, the only is, you said you may ask some of the tenants to park out back in the.
Yeah, that was on page two, I just hadn't gotten.
You're jumping the gun, okay.
I'll hold back.
Thank you.
Before I go, Yvonne, any questions, comments?
I'm just trying to understand, B and C combined, 84. How did you get 84?
I added 19 plus 65.
Okay.
So Building B, right here, it says 19, right here says 19, and then down here, Building C, 65.
Okay.
So B and C for 84.
Okay.
You got me questioning my math there for a second.
Matt, does your math include anything in the way of parking on the accessway in back of Buildings A and B?
Only in the back of Bill, well, our total spaces is according to the plan that you guys have on file. The plan that exists today, I guess with the Gray Star plan, they're talking about maybe adding five more spots, but that isn't.
I asked the question because there are no spaces there. It's not lined.
Right, we know it's not lined yet. That is, it's not lined because we don't want to pay the money if the planning board in Gray Star comes to.
So what you're suggesting is you're using, you're counting according to the plan that was approved in terms of those spaces, yes?
Yes, yeah, I am.
Right.
So a couple of questions, because I think there's some, let's say, disagreement over what the parking lot looked like a couple of nights last week.
Okay.
Number one, when I pulled through the night it was raining very heavily mid-last week, there was 12 cars parked, actually eight pickup trucks and a couple of cars parked perpendicular to the B building, the front building. There was eight cars parked parallel out in front on the roadway, on the opposite side of the B building. When I came around the corner to the gym area, the gymnastics studio, it's not a gymnasium, by the way, under Linduslaw. That's an important, important difference. There was, I think it was 47 spaces full in that double parking area, and there was cars trying to drop people off in front of the studio in the rain while people were trying to back out at the same time. There was a line of cars queued up. Obviously, they didn't want to get out in the rain and let the kid go, they were going to drop the kid off at the door and then go park the car. So that evening, there was some 75 to 80 spaces used. So the problem I see, especially with the gymnastics studio, is that those classes, and according to their onsite schedule, there is more than two classes in some given hours. That's posted online. All of their classes, almost all of their classes are full, they're all shown as waitlisted. And you got a major issue in that proper planning requires there's enough parking spaces to cover both sets of classes. Because the car can't be gone until the kids are out, and the next kids coming in have to be in there before those kids are out. Because they go back-to-back according to the schedules. So you've got about half as many counted for for the gymnastics studio than you would need in a typical gymnastics studio scenario where they run classes hour-to-hour, back-to-back like that. Because the cars are still there from the 7 o'clock class when the people are coming in at quarter of 8 for the 8 o'clock class. I couldn't even drive through that. I had to drive around the back of the big building to get back out, because there was cars all lined up dropping kids off. So the cars that were trying to, couldn't get out. There just isn't enough spaces there right now. And there was six cars parked over behind the foundation for Building C. So some of the people were dropping kids off, driving over and parking behind there.
Do you mean Building A? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Building A. The building was just a foundation.
So you said that there was about 80 spaces taken up, which would, if you my math, that I worked out for the last 14, so that would leave 46 open spots. That's exactly what I found every time I went, sir. It's the exact number, you just confirmed it. It's the same number. If you saw 80 spots filled and I saw 46 empty.
Except nobody.
Eighty and 46 is 126, which is what we have.
No one's parking behind the big building, and no one's parking in those parking spaces that down on a diagonal.
I cover that in page two if we want to talk about page two. Your math is the exact same as mine. It's, you and I are both on the same page on that. I'm just.
So my point is that I've passed on to the engineer that those numbers need to be shown on the revised plan.
Your math and my math is the same.
On to page two.
So, all right, so as part of the agreement, if we come to an agreement with the town, I mean, we're all trying to work this out together and figure this out, right? So as part of the agreement of the town, we request the tenant employees park out back away from the buildings to free up for their patrons. That'll free up roughly 12 to 14 parking spaces down that center aisle, which will alleviate some of what you're, what it is that you're discussing there. I understand that.
You're speaking to, as I'm standing on the roadway, back left?
I'm talking Building C has the double rows down the center and have the employees park out back where the dumpsters are.
Back left, as I would be looking.
Yes, sir.
From the.
Correct, yeah, further away from the door, right? I mean, that's, it's, that's why.
Building C, tenant employees.
Yes. Yeah, so we are basing this on supermarkets, Ocean State, Home Depot, that's where the thought process is. That would alleviate 12 or 14 more spots down the center, which would free up. So it said here 13 nights, this is when I typed this, I'd have actually been up there for 14, and then plus that Saturday afternoon, just to see what it was like. The parking lot had 46. It does not include that, so this does not include the 14 spaces in front of unbuilt Building A, which is the first building when you pull up. So that, my numbers do not include that. So I heard your concerns about tournaments and recitals. I've talked to all of my tenants and asked them to coordinate. I right here notify us, Peyton Development, they're going to coordinate with myself when they are planning on holding special events. I will work with all my other tenants to plan accordingly so as to not overlap and cause issues. So your concern was duly noted. Everybody is in agreement. Baseball does his thing certain times of the year, and then he's pretty much closed for six months of the year, and he's only outside for, he's actually going outside this week, and he won't be back until November. So that's how that goes.
In large numbers.
Yes, it's, but it's the same numbers that I was up there for. I mean, I've been, I heard you guys, and I have pictures, and I wanted to make sure that I had brought, came to you with.
Yeah, but my experience would be that over the course of the winter, you've got youth baseball players who are in there working in the cages and so forth.
Sure.
During the summertime, you know, there are some who will come in and do their stuff, but as you say, most of it's going to be outside.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So the tenants, so to answer the tenants parking on the roadway, the tenants have been made aware not to park in the entry road on the wood side. They thought it was a parking area, they don't, they did not realize that it was a road and not parking. So we are in the process of rectifying that. This just came to light last week, and there will be no parking, there are no parking spaces there. Gray Star and Peyton Development will put up no parking signs. And I believe that, excuse me, since I said something on Thursday to the jujitsu guy, to my tenant at jujitsu, he made his people aware, and he, there has been nobody parking there since last Thursday on the roadway. Okay? All right. I heard you on mentioning 612, which has no bearing on this property. I wasn't involved in 612 last time when I was here before the planning board. I work for Peyton Development, and I now handle everything that I can for Peyton Development. So I heard you loud and clear when you said that you need us to come to you when there's a change in tenants outside of the contractor in storage scope. I will come to you with the tenant before they come on board. So there is no confusion over, like what had happened previous times in the past. And, well, I'm not, I know, Mr. Gardner, that you disagree with this, but the architect and building department have both signed off on occupancy Group A3, which is what we built Building C under. This occupancy is for gymnasiums without spectator fixed seating. It's the only thing in the occupancy classifications that those two, that baseball and gymnastics fit under is A3. And classify, calling it a gymnasium because it's a gymnastics studio makes it be a gymnasium, which is one space equalling three seats. Taken into account that restaurants, which are one space, three seats also, everybody comes in one vehicle together as family members, and they leave together. That's how the math worked that I did. That's what I have for you.
All right, so Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that we formally request that they provide a revised site plan document done by a, and stamped by an engineer as required by the special permit, that itemizes all of the parking as it is expected to be, given the current uses and the future use of the remaining building that isn't built yet. Because our current site plan document doesn't agree with what's here, and that's a requirement under the special permit that was issued based on two different sections. Because we issued that to a building. Cause we issued that to a building that was gonna have thirty-two contractor base.
So Mr. Gardner makes the motion that the applicant be requested to provide an updated site plan reflecting current, um. Uses and parking spaces associated with those uses. Fair?
Yes, and that that document, uh, have again on it the engineer's stamp certifying that. To the best of his ability, those are the number of parking spaces required for the uses that it described. That should be described on that special permit.
So there's a motion from Mr. Gardner. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Motion is made and seconded. Discussion. So question, Matt, um, building A, current plan?
Contractor base. Storage, oh, whoever comes to us. I mean, really with the, we wanna get. This settled from you so that we could actually go buy the building and put up another building and start collecting rent, cause right now we're not doing anything. So that's where we're at. Um, I, I guess I'm not understa, what, what is it that you're looking for me to do from this?
I, I don't need you to.
I thought we had.
I don't need you to do anything. That special permit plan needs to be modified.
No, I, well. I don't know that it's up to you or us. I think what we're, what we're, the motion is, is that the applicant, you know, would connect with the engineer and request that updated site plan. Containing the information that we've requested and that it be a stamped plan for submission to the board.
Okay.
So we're basically looking to, you know, to get a plan that locks in. You know, what uses you have and what spaces the engineer would consider, you know, the engineer may agree with you a hundred percent. I don't know.
Okay, that, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so that's, that's what we're looking for.
We've also, I've also asked Eddie Jacobs to take a look at that parking revision that's part of the special permit. And, and it looks like the geometry works if you change that parking from two sets of parallel parking rows to a single angled parking row.
Okay.
So that cars coming in pull in on an angle.
Right.
And back out on an angle.
Right.
Uh, because we know that many, many people have great difficulty these days, parallel parking. And it's one way in and out of there. Per the, per that revision that was submitted for the special permit hearing that will be going on next month. It actually appears to mathematically allow two more spaces if you angle park instead of parallel park.
And I know we're not here to talk about this plan, but you're talking about in this area, instead of having parallel parking on this side, you're talking about having it be angled parking all the way down the line here?
Angle parking in towards the building.
On just the right-hand side.
Oh, it'd be the, the left-hand side of the building as you're driving in from Route eighteen.
Right, but the right-hand side of the, the drive-in.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I will, um.
Bollards, bollards on the left-hand side, angle parking on the right-hand side. You've got, what do you call them? Flexible bollards, I think you call them on the plan? To separate the, the, that driveway from the main entrance.
Thought it was gonna be an island?
Or an island.
On the, on the plan, it's an island. We didn't wanna do bollards, cause the guy that plows it, uh, my, doesn't really wanna have to weave around.
That's fine.
Okay.
Um, and I think the other thing that you might do with the engineer is to just, apropos of your comments on employee parking, just, um, you know, show where that will be. On the plan. Okay, so there's, uh, Matt, anything further you're.
No, I, I.
Looking for?
No, there's nothing else that I'm looking for. Um, I'll, I'll get with, um, Ed Jacobs and talk to him and see what, see if he agrees with my numbers and whatever. Well, my numbers and your numbers are the exact same number, right, and.
Well, we know they're close. We're just trying to figure out whether or not if, if they, if, if you, if you take into account that schedule of gymnastics and the fact that. Two sets of classes go back to back.
Right, I understand.
I mean, I think, I think, you know, just my own observation is, you know, probably, I don't know, half the day, better than half the day, you have, probably don't have an issue. There are those crunch times, early evenings, when things are swapping over and what have you, that you've got an awful lot of people in there.
Right.
Uh, and I think the gymnasium, uh, the, the gymnastics studio rather is not set up, uh, you know, as a, you know, sit, something where you're gonna just drop off your child and go. That's gonna be a, somebody who's staying there to park.
Right.
Um. East Coast Eagles, maybe a little mixture. There are older kids, there are younger kids. Some will, you know, have drop-offs, some will drive their own vehicles there and, you know, they'll, they'll leave them there. Jujitsu, to me, um, the times that I've gone by there and assuming that his, his, he's using the. Avenue driveway side of the building for access, for his main entrance, if you will. Uh, it's been pretty much that whole parking area behind.
Right.
It's, has been full with some parked across the way.
Right.
Uh, not recently. I went by there tonight, there was not.
Correct.
But the whole, with the exception of two spaces behind that building, it was full. So, you know, I think he, God bless him, seems to do a nice business, so that's good. Um, but, um, yeah, I, I mean, I think if we, um, if we get that locked in, then, you know, we can. Make sure everybody's on the same page going forward. So if you have no other thoughts or questions, uh, motion is on the floor. Mr. Gardner's motion seconded by Mr. Lawler. For creation of a plan as described. Uh, all in favor of that motion, so signified by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. That is unanimous vote of all members and associate member present.
Would you like to see me back here in May and maybe we can finish this?
Uh, can you have this done by May fourth?
I don't see why not. That gets me five, it's almost five weeks. I'm sure that, uh.
Because the other matters are scheduled.
Sure.
For May twentieth and the thought was that they didn't wanna go forward until.
Right, until this gets finished.
This gets finished, so that's the only date that's available.
Sure, I'm sure that, uh, I can meet with PMP tomorrow. It's not a problem.
So Candy, if you'll make a note, please, to put that on the agenda, uh, for May four. Thank you.
Alright, very good. Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Have a good night. Do a little Bennett Lane, Mr. Gardner? I'm not sure why the selectmen passed that to us.
I don't know. Bennett, it's on the agenda.
It is, good.
This is, uh, this is McCray Drive. I think we have, we didn't, all that I know is the selectman emailed. Talked about Bennett Lane. I don't, I don't know.
That was among the.
Nothing ever came back.
Right, that was among the various.
You all right?
Accepted streets and just, you know, I think that was the question.
Wounded list.
Just to make sure that that's on.
She's on the wounded, you know, the.
Oh, I know.
That's the worst feeling.
We, we forwarded to the selectmen a while back, three streets that historically.
I've, I've been.
What appears to be public ways since way back in the, in the late eighteen hundreds.
I don't know, I don't know where I've.
And Bennett Lane is one of those. Bennett, Bennett Lane in eighteen hundreds was actually plumby, right? Only took the ancient paths.
Literally everybody was.
That's coming back to us, but. I'll, I'll, I'll check with town clerk on the Bennett Lane matter. To try and, and, and see if we can clarify the confusion over why.
Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're leaving Saturday.
Considered one of the three town, uh, three streets that we should be accepting at this point.
Oh, that's right.
I think two of them have actually just added to the street list, cause town clerk confirmed that.
That's right, yes.
North Water Street and.
Yes, yes.
Old Plymouth Street.
Yeah.
Were.
Not Old Plymouth Street, old, uh.
No, we ordered six, yeah.
Old Oak Street.
Set Leah to.
Were both public ways prior to the relaying out of the, of the streets. And they, they, their name changed from.
Do they have a prediction for the weather?
Oak Street to Old Oak Street, which knocked it off the list, cause Old Oak Street isn't on the list. The street was on the list and the same with North Water Street. The, North Water Streets had four different names over the last hundred some odd years.
Okay, so with respect to, uh, C two Bennett Lane and street acceptance, uh, Mr. Gardner will be in contact with the town clerk's office to follow up on that. Um, sir, you've been waiting patiently. What can we do for you?
Hi, John.
Just give us your name for the record. Yep, perfect.
O'Malley for two hundred Grove Street, he's real. Built the house back in eighty-four. Like, so, uh, when, when, when they were building the houses there, the land was coming down this way out, cause it was farms, there was somewhere, and the water just ran all the way out to, to Elm Street. So. So when Paul Volklund built the houses, mine was the second one he built. He had like two houses, then he's gonna have a street, but he went, kept going down to, to, um, Elm Street. And then, uh, he, he got his only, only two, like. Um, Mr. Uh, Vol, not Volklund, I can't remember. He's already gone now. Mr. Colter, then he built my house and then he built Manny's house. And in between the thing, it was flat, you know, going, the, the land's going down like that. So they were gonna have a, his plan, big plan was to build McCray Drive. But he was just gonna take one house at a time, get down to Elm Street, then to McCray Drive. Now, a, as he got through the thing, it ended up, um. The land went crazy, you know, the prices, and he couldn't go any further. So the, um, McCray Drive never got built. The only two more houses got built going down there, but nothing, because all the land was flowing down to, um, and they had a, like a river, a thing there. Uh, like a ditch, whatever, running down with the pipes from Elm Street. Now, the, um, what, it ended up happening thirteen years later. They, somebody bought the land and so, and started building McCray Drive. So then, um, so with the, where the land was going flat this, that, this way, they had to build McCray Drive. So what they did is they raised the street like five feet. So my land became, when McCray Drive, I had a big ditch. Right, my, my driveway coming out was, used to be, it's just flowing down. I mean, now it's got a big ditch. And it's about four feet deep, probably about a hundred feet long on McCray Drive, when finally it gets. Higher now, but the water, you, you'd have to go up four feet of water before it, it would keep going down to McCray Drive. So I, and Mr. Lundberg was the, 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 or the land inspector, whatever, the building inspector. So I said, you know, this, this isn't gonna look too good. I said, I mean, you, cause the other houses, the land's still just going down flat to, to the way down where they have the ditch down there from the. Now, I, over the years, I mean, I, I told him, I said, this isn't gonna work too good. And he said, nope, there's nothing you can do about it. We can, uh, uh, we're okay in it. You know, and I said, this, this doesn't seem right, you know? So, so over the years, I mean, there's nothing I can do. So, but it just started getting worse and worse. And, uh, and this year was the worst, because the, um, when we got to all that rain last year, I mean, barrels of rain. And, well, I should say up at Grove Circle, built a new house, built up just across mine, then two houses up, was just a big, big. Land. So then, uh, Mrs. Fleming owned the land and everything. And they, uh, they built two houses there, about a hundred feet back, at least a hundred feet back. And both driveways meet in the thing and they come rushing out the thing. Now, the, the guys were telling me that the, that they were supposed to, supposed to have built, um. You know, drains and stuff to catch that water coming down, because now it's up, just coming down like this, but. So obviously they didn't do it. And to say how much rain it was, they, they had to cut a hole, you know, it's like ten, twenty feet wide. To build the driveway coming out to, to Grove Street. And so that the thing, that's why you never seen water coming, because it was too hot in the water. Now all of a sudden they made that big opening, two hundred-foot driveway is beaten. That gushing, it was, I, I mean, wife saw this, she took pictures of it and. Now, I said, this is crazy. My kid, my oldest boy lives in Ireland, with his little ones and everything, and they, they come over. And, and they, he couldn't even play in the yard, cause it was, you had, had about, well, two, one to two feet of water at least. They had boots and everything and they were only four years old, six years old. And, and then it, it kinda wrecked the, the backyard too, because. When that water come gushing down and went, the house next to me, it crossed right Louise's, um, property, driveway and it ran down and then all behind me. So it's getting all that water and then it's coming down over my driveway. I mean, so I said, this isn't right. And so then, um. I, I, I mean, Jay, the, um, one of the inspectors there, so, um, or, we're, we're, no, DPW guys. And, uh, he come out, looked and he said, you know, this is terrible. He said, I can't believe, he says, you got about three, four feet of water and it's just in that big, big hole, which I knew eventually it's gonna happen. And, um, so the, um, he said, let me see what I can do. And then Alex, the conservation guy, come down. And, and, uh, he came down, he looked and he said, that we wouldn't allow them building how, uh, a, a street like that. Because you can't build a street with that big thing, cause the water can't go anywhere. So, and then went to get, it goes a hundred feet where it gets so to, before it can start rolling down the thing there. Down the street, McCray Drive. So he said that, that they wouldn't allow them to build it. They would have to bring that thing up to the road. They're gonna make the road four feet high, you gotta, don't build it just for the poor guy. Now, I mean, I, if I wanted to sell my house, like, you, you'd have to wear boots to go and, I mean, it's, my little ones from Ireland, I mean, I had three little ones, I guess six great grandkids. Between five and seven. Thought I wasn't gonna have any grandchildren. But, you know, when I retired ten years ago, I had no grandkids and I said, geez, where are the kids? And I haven't, next thing I know, within a year, they started having kids.
Here he is, right here.
And then I became the babysitter, cause the wife was, I retired.
But it's been there, wait, fifty years.
Work is easy. But, um, so. There's no water. Let, let's see what I could do. So, um, uh, Jay said, let me see, but it, so he built a berm. It was a good a berm. So he blocked the water coming over Louise's property, so it wouldn't go down the back. And then he came down the street by my house. And he said, uh, and made the, my door bigger, you know, it's bigger and higher. I mean, and it did, did a nice job. I mean, that's, and he said to me, he said, um. What, you know, we can do, he said, what we need to do is to fill that. Once we get the berm going, then we can fill up the dirt, he said. We got plenty of dirt and rocks, he said, that's all it needs. He said, you, you.
Alright, so let, let, let's stop at this point. Cause I, under current land use law, you can't fill that. Stormwater management won't let you touch that. And under current land use law, all the lots are responsible for the, for the water that runs off their lot and they can't, they can't put it on an adjacent lot. So the town, over the last two years. They spent a bunch of times out there with equipment, getting the elevations correct and put a berm on the south side of Grove Street. So that all of the water coming down Grove Street now goes into the Catch Basin.
Most of it.
That's actually in front of, in front of the O'Malley House. And there's, there's a four-inch berm there now. That Catch Basin was built as part of the McCray Drive subdivision. It's actually.
That, that, that was not built McCray.
It was, it was torn out, it was torn out, rebuilt and connected to the drain.
That's what Jay said. That was just recent. I know, we're talking about years ago, geez. But the, uh, that was just something less than a year ago. Fact, I mean, I get the dates when I talk to them and everything.
That's when the berm went in a year ago.
With the berm, yeah, that, they didn't, never raised, never my property to meet the road.
You can't do that and you couldn't do it then.
Yes, they, they said they could. They said, Alex, the conservation guy, said, he come down to look at it, cause I was talking to, and, uh, he said, they would never allow that. They would have to have that, you know, corrected, right when they're doing the road.
Today, you would've had a detention basin there. An actual detention basin.
They wouldn't, I wouldn't have let him put down on my property.
That would've been done when the house was built new.
What house? My house?
When your house was new, under today's rules.
That wasn't there.
Under today's rules. That property, if it was vacant and was gonna build a house on it, would require a detention basin there.
That's, if you knew what you were doing when you built your house. They didn't stay that when I built the house. And that wasn't even gonna be there then, because they didn't, they didn't build the street to thirteen years later.
Well, that's because the Williamses didn't have the money to do that, the owners of the land.
Oh, I'm just.
They kept selling individual lots to Volklund to try and get enough money to build the road.
Sir, is, is there a solution to this problem?
No, cause we can't, you can't put the water out to the road. If you fill that in, it's gonna put the water out on the road. And that's illegal under today's rules, both at state level and, and local level.
Does he have a solution to that problem?
I have more water in his backyard. His, his, in my backyard, there's no water in that ditch today. There wasn't any in it yesterday. So it drains faster than.
Yeah, it's soggy. You, right now it's soggy.
I know that. My whole yard is soggy, all the way up my foundation. I know that.
I'm just saying that ditch is soggy. I couldn't sell that property today. I couldn't sell it. I wouldn't have built it if they told me, you're gonna put it, I would've picked one of the other properties. We had the, the whole thing of where we wanted to have it built.
Two thirds of the houses in town have soggy lawns right there.
That's not my problem. That's not, the solution was, I didn't, if they knew about this, they never told us that this was gonna happen. Because I have a bunch of little kids, that they couldn't play.
Your whole lot sheds to that side. Your entire lot.
What?
Your entire house lot sheds west to that, to that ditch. It sheds from west to, to east. I mean, east to west.
The thing, if you, if that was built up, all I'm saying is, you couldn't build it up before they built the road. So it's thirteen years later. I mean, when...
But the point I'm, I'm trying to make here is you can't shed water from your lot onto an adjacent property. And the town has already taken into account what, what water came down Grove Street. And it actually doesn't come from those two houses. It comes from, it comes from Grove Circle.
Yeah, but...
And the heavy rain, if you watch where that, that river comes from, it comes out of Grove Circle.
Well, it's wherever the new street, the new street. We were, we were watching it, me and Jay, and they were there. I mean...
Anyway, there's...
So, I mean, as, as I look at this, you've got a, you've got a plan from, what, nineteen ninety-four?
That's the, that's the subdivision as built, which would have been nineteen... Nineteen ninety-eight, is it? Where's the date on it?
Nineteen ninety-four.
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 Ninety-four, okay.
So, you've got, you've got a plan that um, you know, is, has uh, been prepared as an as-built. It's uh, been accepted by the appropriate parties. What do you see as the solution at this point? What, what is it you're looking for?
Well, I already, I mean, I, I had somebody come down. Well, at first Jay and them were the ones that, that this is the solution to do, what you can do. The, the only person that objected was Mr. Haynes. I mean, he was, I don't wanna say him, but he says he's a nice guy, but he wasn't a nice guy to me, so.
Yeah, I, I mean...
He insulted me in front of his workers, which I didn't think was so good. Because I was trying to, I first went up and said anything we can do. I wasn't being another, and I said, is there anything I can do with this? All that water's coming down the street now. And I said, the uh, so they first, they said, well, he, he can't talk to you now, so make an appointment. So, so after about three months of trying to meet him, kept on, shit, they kept on saying, I, I'll, we'll leave the message, he's gonna call you when it, never called. I mean, ten times he didn't call with it. And so then all of a sudden, I went for the, I, I was going every day, just to say his name. Finally went one day, and the girl said, he still hasn't called you yet? And I said, no.
I mean, I, I, I think, you know...
So then all of a sudden, she said, I come up to her, she says, he's in his office, she says, I'm gonna go get him now. So then he come out in the office, and he says, oh, Mr. O'Malley there? And I said, yeah, yes, you know, and uh, he, he said, well, you know, there's not too much we can talk about this. And I said, I said, well, there's nothing we can do. And I said, well, I mean, the only reason I got involved in this is because your supervisor, the DPW, told me what they could do, build the berm. Wasn't anything they decided to do thirteen years ago. This is just when I brought it up last year. So then uh, and Jay come down, oh, this, well, I can do this and this, and I, you know. So I said, no, Bill, I would just try, I just wanna know what we can do. And then he, he's the one that said to me, I, once we build the berm, and if we got the water not coming into the driveway anymore, then you can build that up. See, if you, if you build it up now, the water will just rush it when it comes down. You know, from the street to driveway and, and from the next door neighbor too. But they, they helped correct a lot of that, doing the berm, which is good, so...
But, but point being...
So then all of a sudden, he says to me, he says...
I mean, I think that the options that are available, certainly from, you know, from...
Well, I had Smithers Landscaping, and they, and they said they, they know what to do, so...
They can't do that though.
I'm just telling you, they, I, I, all I know is, all I, all I know is that...
They, they might have in their mind, okay, we have a, a depression, or a ditch, or whatever we have there right now. Okay, if we fill this, this will eliminate your problem. However, the point being, that you can't legally do that under today's rules and regs. So, I, I mean, I don't know that there's a great solution. I'm not, I'm not an engineer, uh, certainly.
Well, anyway, I just wanna finish my, so then Mr., he says, Mr. O'Malley, you have one problem, you know. I'm the only one in town that'll say, and he yells it out, say no to you. No, we're not doing it. And then his employees are all there.
That's really about enough. They've been on that site five times in the last two years. They, they, it fully engineered the roadway to get the slopes. They documented where the water comes from. They designed a new berm system to go in. They came down and put the berm in. They came back later and made it higher, when it was obvious that there was still some overflow. So to say they haven't done anything in the last two years is flat out false.
No, no, I didn't say they didn't do anything. I said, Mr., they, they were great, great...
Well, that's all he can do. He can't touch...
No, I know, but I'm saying...
He can't touch anything that's not on the public way. He can't legally do anything that's not on the public way.
I didn't, I...
I mean, that's the problem.
It didn't ma- it didn't matter that, I wasn't looking, at, I first went there, because when, when, somebody wrote by, jeez, we see all that's bad, the water's coming in the thing, and everything, I said, okay. But then I, from working, I worked the town hall.
I know that.
Town greeter, I do the volunteers there, one, one Wednesday. So, different people were asking, oh, jeez, I seen the water get down, you think it's a mess down there. So uh, and then the um, so all I asked was, you know, what can I, can I do anything about it? So Alex first said, let me shoot down and see what it looks like. So he comes down, back down, he kind of, yeah, yeah, that's, that's terrible. You shouldn't have the, shouldn't be like that. So now, he's one that didn't say anything that I couldn't do it. He said, then uh, and so then Jay come down, and we talked. He said, we talked about, you wanna try a berm? And I said, yeah, whatever you think is the best thing. I was gonna make, so I went along with that.
As Mr., as Mr. Gardner is saying, I mean, the limits of the town, town's ability to help in this situation are limited to what they can do on, you know, the, the, the public ways. You know, we, the town does not have the ability to go in and, you know, improve or change, or, you know, whatever your property, they, that's just not something they can do. Um, and, you know, I don't, again, I'm not an engineer. Uh, the, I, I don't know of, of a great solution here. Uh, but it sounds like, you know, from what Mr. Gardner is describing, over the last couple of years, the town has made the efforts that the town can make.
I'm, I'm not saying they didn't make an effort. I understand what you're...
No, I'm not, I'm just, you know, and, and I, I, I struggle to see what more the town can do here, um, you know, under the circumstances.
I know you can't pump water, like you can't, I'm thinking, pump water on the street. I know you, you can't do that. When I built the house, I made sure that I, you know, they dug it down, I built a, a thing around it. You know, one of those um, kind of thing, what are the, things that go around the house that, what do you call that drain?
French drain? French?
French drain, yeah, we all dug it down for all the rocks, put a thing, and the, the uh, the pipe, we're not, at that time, there was nothing there. So they said, no, leave it like that, and when they build a street, we'll hook it up to the, you know, my pipe up to their pipe.
Alright, well, what's the, the pleasure of the board?
That was it. I mean, so, I mean, I, I don't have any water or any problem. But, but all I'm saying is when they were building this, I mean, if they're building a house and they say, it's doing this, because I, we were inquiring what's going on, where the house is gonna go, the street and everything. And, and we didn't realize, they didn't say that, well, we're gonna build the streets as high, and you, nobody can go on your side property. You know, I, I, I wouldn't have bought, I wouldn't have moved there with the little kids I had, three little ones. So, that's what I'm saying. Thirteen years later, they, they come up with this. And, and I, I didn't get on the thing bang and say, all I asked was simple, what can we do? I, I didn't say, you can have to do, I was more looking, what can I do? And uh, and, and so they're the one, the guy, gentleman comes down, which I didn't know Alex, and say, he comes down, looks over, and he says, jeez, you gotta, this gotta be fixed, this is a problem. He says, you can't live like that. And he says, and you didn't do it because they would never allowed you to do the street now. Or they would just build it the way they, so it wouldn't have a problem.
Okay, well, I think, you know, we've, we've heard, we've heard the issue. Uh, I don't know that there's anything that the planning board can do for you, quite honestly.
They told me I had to go through here first. That's all I was in the, I said, I had to go through here.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that um, there may be an engineered solution to it, but that would be something that you would have to, to, to...
I can't believe that the thing got signed off. I get the paperwork, Chris, somebody was saying, we can sign off.
We're not gonna revisit that history, so...
They did. I get the paperwork, the show, they all signed off.
So...
It was inspected. So how could it be?
Well, clearly it was, uh, at the time, nineteen ninety-four, we've got the stamped and sealed plans, so, prepared by, by the, the appropriate people, signed off by the appropriate people, so. You know, as I say, I think the town has made the efforts that the town can make. Um, and unless somebody else has a suggestion, uh, you know, I...
Well, I don't know why we can't say it can't be fixed, because if I had a...
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not suggesting if, if...
And they said, there's no problem. What you do is you have, you have to build a trench, and the pipe goes down, because all that's...
If you have a proposal that's submitted by an engineer, who can work within today's rules and regulations, that addresses your problem, great. Other than that, I don't know that there's a lot that we can do. Uh, the, an engineer may be able to help you, maybe not. Uh, but it's certainly not something that we can address here, uh, at this point with what we have in front of us. So, I thank you for your comments.
I know there's a lot of problems with the, no, I just didn't say, I, I didn't initiate this thing. They seen the water coming down, they go, wow, Jay and them. And then Alex come down to see what it looked like, and he said, it's terrible.
Okay.
So then that guy, he said, you gotta put, do something, go, put a thing to the town, see if they can help you. That's all I was doing, and then uh, the worst thing was, so many ones chasing the other guy.
Well, I wish we had a, an easy solution for you, but unfortunately, we do not. So, uh, let us move on, um, to our next matter, which would be, um, the scheduling of...
One of thirteen kids, I got twelve brothers and sisters.
Scheduling of...
It's a pot and a party. They kind of play on the...
What do we need to schedule?
Scheduling of public hearings on the um... Amendments to the zoning bylaws. That would be section seven thirteen and R five, the ARPA district. So the chair would entertain a motion to...
Monday, May sixth.
Is it Monday? Is it the sixth or the fourth?
The sixth.
Sixth, okay. So the chair, that's the, yeah, because the next one is the twentieth, right. So the chair would entertain a motion to um, to schedule public hearings on section seven, or actually, we'll do it this way, section thirteen, section seven, in the ARPA district for seven ten, seven twenty, and seven thirty on May sixth, twenty twenty-four.
That's thirteen.
Thirteen is the site plan bylaw. That we've approved in the past. That's not in the packet tonight, but that we discussed in the past.
It's a town meeting, is it? Is that a town, town meeting?
Town, isn't there a town meeting?
Not on May sixth.
Like the twelfth or something?
Uh, no, it's after, it's the town meeting, Roy, is the twenty-seventh, is that right?
Town, town meeting, the end.
End of May, right. That Monday, the twenty-seventh?
It'd be the twenty-seventh.
Yeah. So we need, we need to hold these public hearings to uh, you know, on these several matters, so that they can appropriately be heard by, at, at town meeting. So they have all been referred back to us by the selectmen. Uh, the, so seven ten, seven twenty, seven thirty, and then there would be a question with regard to the town bylaw, that the um, the uh...
I'll speak to the...
Delinquent tax, um, waiver that we discussed earlier. If that is to be heard by the planning board, that would be at seven forty.
I'll speak to town administrator tomorrow morning in the selectman's office to see. I believe that'd be a selectman's...
Yep.
Uh, hearing, but I'll confirm that in the morning.
So, at this point...
Kevin, Matt will be coming up to on the sixth. Matt Smith, what time did you want him to do his hearing?
Uh, let us do Matt immediately after, um, after those three matters. So, let's, let's schedule him at seven forty-five. Alright, and so the motion, or the chair would accept a motion for the scheduling of public hearings on those three zoning article amendments for seven ten, seven twenty, seven thirty on the sixth of May. Mr. Gardner makes that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Lawler seconds the motion. Further discussion, hearing. Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed. In unanimous vote of all members, including the associate member present in voting. Okay, so those will be three public hearings on those. Uh, we'll have the discussion for uh, an update on um, the Speedway. And then um, the following week, we'll have the two public hearings, uh, following meeting, rather, we'll have the two public hearings. Anything further? Anything further?
Nope, not for me.
Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I can do that.
Made by Mr. Gardner.
Aren't you gonna use your, I'll second that.
Gonna use your gavel?
Seconded by Mr. Lawler.
Use your gavel.
All in favor? Meeting is adjourned.
Is that better?